Hello?
Hello.
Yeah, all right. I don't hear anything. I mean, I see the numbers. I've called everything and nothing's happening. Oh, okay.
Test, test one two.
Commissioner Seifel? Uh, yes.
Good evening all, how are you?
Mike.
Good evening all, how are you? Welcome to our special meeting. Mr. Dodge, let's call this to order. And City Clerk, call a roll please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Here.
Commissioner Good?
I am here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Vice Mayor Seifel?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
I'm here.
We have a call room.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, I hope you're feeling better. Let's stand for a ple-
Mayor.
Please. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Resolution number one, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Good evening. Just as a matter of record, Mr. Mayor and Commission, under the Broward County Charter, Section 1.07, certain aspects of the meeting this evening are being held on an emergency basis, as provided for by law. The notice has been properly given in the city's website, as well as being posted. And for that purpose, we cite for the record that the manager has noted that on the record. That's Section 1.07 of the Broward County Charter, which requires a notice of certain meetings and declarations of emergency, which has been legally done on the agenda and on the website. For the record, the first item on the agenda is a resolution, and the following is of record. Discussion and possible action to select one of the following Emergency Solid Waste Disposal Agreement options, listed as Option A or B below. Option A is as follows. Option A is a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Number 2023 R-08, which if adopted would be proposed Resolution Number 2023 R-08, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County for solid waste disposal and support services. Attached Tier Two is Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to effectuate the intent of the Second Amendment, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. The resolution does not embrace Option B, but for the record, allow me to please elaborate on the record what Option B would be, and it'll be explained further by the city administration through the city manager. Option B for the record, and again, under the emergency declaration under Section 107 of the Broward County Charter, Option B would be a motion, if adopted, to approve entering into an agreement with Waste Connections of Florida for solid waste disposal services in the best interest of the City of Pembroke Pines pursuant to Section 35.18, Subsection C, Subsection 8 of the city's Code of Ordinances. Those are the two items, Mr. Mayor and Commission, for consideration under the regular agenda. Special meetings, emergency meeting, under both the county's charter and the city's as well. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Happy to assist where we can.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Thank you, City Attorney. Manager, just want to commend you and your staff for a great job here in a week to come up with something. Do I have a motion by Vice Commissioner Schwartz?
Motion to approve Option B.
Commissioner Schwartz?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Option B.
Guys are second.
I'd like to second, second please.
All right, second by Commissioner Good. Discussion.
Yes, Mayor, if I may.
Okay, don't all speak up at once. Which one was first?
Schwartz.
Commissioner Schwartz, go ahead.
Mr. Dodge, I want to thank you for your stellar leadership in resolving something that I believe is absolutely needed at this time. Last week, we rejected a working group, and we deferred the possibility of going with a five-year deal with the county. Because of your work throughout the last week, Option B allows us only a three-year deal, and we will not be beholden to Broward County's, which I believe may, and I'm going to echo Commissioner Good's comments from a week ago, potential antitrust-related actions for some cities that have only one choice. I'm happy to support Option B. It is a good deal for the residents. It is a good deal for the businesses within our city. And I believe it is a good model for cities in Broward County to consider moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo the sentiments of Commissioner Schwartz. Mr. Manager, you, again, as I stated last week, you know, exceeded expectations in helping this commission provide leadership in the county in regards to disposal solutions. You know, I'm, one of the things in regards to the documentation that was presented to us, another reason for not going with Option A, aside from the fact that it's a bit more expensive and uncertain, and certainly a bit hazardous for us in terms of our financial circumstance. The agreement is referenced as being assigned to the Independent Solid Waste District, meaning that if we stay in this agreement, there's a potential for them to move our waste to a location that I believe that this entire commission opposes. We don't agree to a waste energy facility on the current Broward County-owned land. And if we get into this agreement, the potential for us to shift it over there is very real. So I certainly am not in support of A. I am in support of B.
Okay. Heard a discussion?
Thank you for what you've done.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes, Mayor.
I'll get to you, Vice Mayor, hold on.
Okay.
Mr. Dodge, I want to congratulate you on finding another rabbit in that hat. And I want to thank my colleague, Commissioner Good, for staying in the shot. You stayed in the shot. I, I like it when we see an opportunity and we give it a chance. I have a couple of questions with respect to this. And this is just for the record. So, Mr. Dodge, is it your understanding that there's no early out of the county agreement?
Mr. Dodge?
I was advised that. That is correct. They cannot modify that agreement. It was for five years. If we were able to explore a different approach to solid waste, we would be penalized. We would not be able to cancel early.
Okay. Second thing is, is Option B a fixed price through the three years? Or is there a cost of living adjustment or a CPI adjustment associated with it?
There is a CPI adjustment associated with it, based on what that CPI is, but in no way can it ever exceed 5%.
It can't exceed 5%?
That's correct.
Okay. And for the public, I know that there's some confusion because there have been multiple interlocal agreements. So the one that we rejected last week has had to do with joining a county system that was an authority that didn't yet have a plan, and they wanted to create this authority also in Pembroke Pines. They're going to create it, because they have more than enough cities. But here in Pembroke Pines, we chose not to join it. I might say we chose not to join it yet, because we don't, we don't know what they're about. We don't know what, what, what plan they might come up with. Could be that in the fullness of time, and we're rooting for them, they come up with the best plan in the world. So long as it doesn't include incineration, we will probably look at it. But that's not, that, that's not what's before us today. What's before us today is ultimately much more practical. This is about where do we start sending our garbage tomorrow? Okay? And we stretch this out to the very last possible date. Up until now, we have been sending it to the Wynn facility, the old wheel operator facility, which Wynn bought, the new company, on 441. That's where all of our garbage has gone. The excess that they can't incinerate has been going to landfills. They want us to renew. We're being invited to renew for another five years that we can't back out of. What the manager has done is come up with an option, which he can describe more fully, that is a three-year deal, and it takes it to a transfer station. So my next, so, so I hope people understand, we're not here to vote on incinerators today. We're here to vote on where your garbage goes. And it has to go somewhere, because it can't stay in Pembroke Pines. So it has to go somewhere so that we can, you know, move, move the trash along, along the route. Okay. So my next question is, where does the trash go under Option B after we send it to this, this location?
Mr. Dodge?
Under Option B, where does the trash go?
The people to address that would be the contractor that we're dealing with. They can advise you.
Okay. Is that my friend Grant?
Mr. Smith, hit the button please.
Good evening.
Need your name and address please?
Grant Smith, 401 East Los Olas Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. I represent Waste Connections of Florida. Thank you very much for having us, and we really appreciate what you're doing. The answer to your question, Commissioner, is that it goes to our landfill, which is in the city of St. Cloud. It's, what we call it is the JED landfill in, in St. Cloud.
And that, and that's currently under capacity and taking fill?
Oh, yes, absolutely. And it's, I believe, off the top of my head, it has somewhere between 35 and 40 years of lifespan.
Okay. So will any of it be incinerated?
No, it will not.
None of it will be incinerated?
We, we internalize all the waste.
Okay. So Option A, and I'm just looking at the residential rates, is $55, excuse me, under Option B, it's $55 for the residential, correct, Mr. Dodge?
Yes, that's correct.
The other option is $54.26 per ton, is that it?
Yes. I'm not an expert in the-
No, no, I'm asking the-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
All right. So the difference is about 74 cents, more or less? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I have to tell you that in getting, in getting a, a deal for just three years with no incineration, given the differences, and giving you the time to come up with a longer-term solution for Pembroke Pines that doesn't include incineration, I don't see how we don't go for Option B. It's a little bit more money, but it's not anything that's going to break anybody's bank. And I think it really comes down to this CPI. So for example, we're in, we're in, we're in an era of inflation right now. If the CPI was 4%, that would be $2.17 added to the basic rate. But it can't exceed 5%. This CPI could easily exceed 5%. So the cap in year two, or possibly in year three, gets us to break even with the 74 cents that I think people would make the sacrifice to pay, knowing that none of this is going to get incinerated. So even though there's an increase here, there's just too many counterweights in favor of going with Option B. I think that this is the best thing for the city, and I'm going to support it.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes?
May I say something? But I think the Vice Mayor wanted to speak first.
What's that?
Go ahead, Mr. Dodge. Go ahead, Mr. Dodge.
I just called-
All right, thank you. What I would really like to, to address so that the public has a little bit more information on this, because I know it's been very confusing. The distinction you have, the county's proposal was for a five-year term with no out on our part. We felt that that was too long a period, because several months ago, this commission went out for letters of interest for finding other types of technology that were more environmentally friendly. We did find two. And I mentioned at the last meeting, in the next couple of months, we will be having a workshop to talk about the reinstitution of recycling of solid waste. And both of the proposals that we received from those different industries indicate that the process they use would achieve a goal of anywhere from 75 to 90% of ominous poor waste would be recycled. So that's what we're working for. We believe this could happen prior to five years. Therefore, if we entered into an agreement and a facility was built to do such, we didn't want to have an obligation to somebody else for two years and have this program sit on the shelf for two years. So that was the reason the three years was very, very important to us. And I thank the commission for the comments and, and for the support. I think this will work out very well for the city. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me well?
Can hear you real well.
Okay, great, thank you. First off, I, I too, I want to say thank you to Mr. Dodge. You know, we, we always rely upon you to find answers to very difficult situations, and you continue, you continue to do that. So, so thank you. We're very fortunate to have you sitting in the seat that you have there for us. I'm, I'm, of course, I am very, very, very happy that we're, we're not, we're not going anywhere near wanting to have an incinerator anywhere near our residents. That's just the most absurd thing that I've heard of in a very long time. And this plan that we've kind of been, had been asked to join, we didn't, we didn't mention again that it wasn't just that we got, we got an invitation to come join a program. We got an invitation to come join a program, but we had to buy our own ticket to join that program, to the tune of $200,000 a year for three years to be able to come and, and join their party, just to see what they thought they might come up with. That was not clearly, clearly, that did not sit well with our residents at our last few meetings. And they were very vocal in expressing their concerns and their desire and their direction that they were giving to their elected officials to move forward. I think we heard you all loud and clear. I think action that's being taken this evening does nothing but, but reinforce that, that we are listening to you all and that we are sticking to our guns and saying absolutely no. No incinerator for us. No incinerator for our residents. We're not going to have that. The other thing that I'm very, very glad to hear, Mr. Dodge, is, is what you were commenting about, that, you know, your research here, you know, recently, where you've been, been going out and checking on other options, is, you know, there are new and better ways, and, and everything, you know, the future always continues to bring us new and better ways. And I think, from what you said, you have found a couple of those ways. And, but the biggest, the biggest, one of the biggest draws that I heard you say was the fact that there's a, these offer this real possibility, this real way to get ourselves back into true recycling. And I hope, I hope our folks that are there tonight, I'm sorry that I'm not there in person, are hearing loud and clear that, that, you know, that we are supporting getting recycling back into our community and get it back to where it was, and even better than what it was. And by utilizing some of these new plans that are out there, new methods of doing that, we are, we are going to get back into recycling in our city. And, and I look forward to hearing more about how, how and when that will actually, that will actually happen. I want to also thank, or just say thank you to this new company coming in here, Mr. Dodge, that you were talking about, that this Waste Connections of Florida, for stepping up to the plate and offering what they had to help us out of this three-year situation, to give us time as a city to figure out what's best for us, what's best for our residents, and what will help move us into the future, where we don't continue to have these discussions about garbage every few years, because we don't have a planned-out, long-term, environmentally correct, and affordable method of getting rid of our garbage, and how do we take care of all of that? So again, I, I just think this is a phenomenal job, this task that's happened here. And I am supporting 1,000% this Option B. And we will continue to say, no incinerators. We're not, we're not. No incinerator for us. And let's move forward. Let's, no incinerator, and let's recycle. So thank you again, and thank you, everyone, for supporting us on, on this move. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, get better. Get better. Okay, if this item passes, Item B, just want to say that I want to commend the companies working with our city in this short period of time. And you know what? This commission listens to our residents. Unfortunately, sometimes in our residents, there's a rumor that starts, and people jump on it. And they make it go longer and longer. Instead of, every resident that calls me, or I know the rest of our wishes are the same, we answer them. We answer them what we know by our attorneys and everything. So, Mr. Dodge, we have anything on the, before we vote?
That's it. Just need a vote.
Okay.
Okay. Call the, Mr. Mayor, before you call the question or the vote, under state law, section 286.0114, the commission, even at the concept of this special emergency meeting, the public has a right to be heard.
Okay.
Before a final action is taken by the mayor and commission.
Do I have any names, city clerk?
Mayor, Vinnie Pallatore requested to speak.
Okay, would you come forward?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Good.
And for the record, Mayor, as Mr. Pallatore is approaching the podium, copies of the contract in the backup is available for the public if they would choose to see it in hard copy.
All right. It's Pallatore, you have three minutes, you need a name and address, please.
Hit the button.
Speak, speak of, no, no, don't you worry about it. I'm controlling the time. You go control the east side.
Reset my clock.
Go ahead.
Okay, commis, all right, commissioners, nice to see everybody again tonight, good evening. I was, Commissioner Seifel, feel, feel well. I'm going to give you a quick little blurb from my wife, since she makes more sense than I do sometimes, than they remind me of that. Anyway, incineration does not encourage reducing or recycling of waste. In fact, it may tend to encourage a greater production of garbage. It is far too costly and research has shown that gas, gas is produced from the burning, contain carcinogens. So it's reduce, recycle and breathe clean air. And as Commissioner Castillo said last time, we're no further ahead than burn and bury. And he held up the plastic, and pretty much that's what you need to do. Already are, are, on my utility bill, I added it up, just, just trash fees, fees, it's $27.35 just for that. Not even counting the water or anything, just coming on with that. If I had my numbers correct, you could correct me later, there was 900,000 tons of annual trash at $55 a ton, which would come out to about $49 million, $49,500,000. So I believe there was some talk about $80 a ton coming up, which would bring it up to 72 million and, which is 22,500,000 difference, which would probably, in my estimate, I'm not a chief financial officer, but it would probably add about $18 to $25 to a residential bill, somewhere thereabouts, in, in my quick estimate. I'm glad that they didn't, they shelved the ILA. I don't see a reason for that. It just seems like our hand would be held to the fire. And, you know, you're going to try and limit what goes into there. And you would have $200,000 times, times three going out of our coffees for what? A lawyer, a director and, and fees? That's it. Then there's no promise of anything. Nothing would happen with this. And if we can get a recycling plant, since we're not in it, Papino's not, Dana's not in it, maybe we can get a recycling holding station somewhere until we can figure out how to recycle this. And if other cities want to come in and use our recycling station, hey, you know what? We charge them and we make money, you know? And I got that like that is going on up in, in Georgia, near my other home up there, and all for recycling. New York City used to recycle, they had a nickel on everything that you bought, it forced you to bring the, bring it back in return and get your money. So I don't know why we can't do that here unless it has to be a state law that has to be put in there, you know, makes you go back, kind of like Aldi's. You know what? You want your quarterback, bring back the cart, you know, outside thing. It's not that hard to do. All right, I thank you very much, and we got to limit some of the amount of people that are coming in here too, unless you're going to figure out what to do with the waste and other infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City clerk?
Jim Lasky?
Jim Lasky. Jim, you have three minutes, you need a name and...
Jim Lasky, you might have remembered me from some of our other discussions we had in past years, but the...
Need your address, Jim.
What?
Need your address, Jim.
5780 Southwest 188th Avenue in Southwest Ranches.
Thank you, sir, go ahead.
Okay. The plan B is the perfect solution. I don't know if any of you ever investigated waste management with as much detail as I have, but you will find it a very transparent website in every step of the recycling process. And I'm going to maintain that Mr. Dodge might be a little bit short of his expectations. You're going to find out that that gas is readily transferable into pipeline quality natural gas. They're still waiting for credits from the federal government now because they don't want to recognize it as a renewable fuel. That's on their income statement. The plastics, it's 100% recyclable into brand-new resins. And there's about 10 or 15 resins we're talking about. So all the conduit that you see being used now for electrical by FPNL, that's high-density polyethylene, which can be made from plastic bags and bottles, and with the waste management process. Other guys got the technology, including the incinerator salesman, whoever he may be. But if you remember, back in 2014, Waste Management sold Wheel Abraider for $1.92 million, billion dollars, I'm sorry. Okay? The technology wasn't any good for them, they didn't stick with it. That should tell you something right there. Today's waste management is a $62 billion market cap. They didn't do that by making mistakes, they did a good job. Pay the guy for doing a good job. You think you want to get into managing trash yourself, can you imagine all the scrutiny you would be going under? Why not work out a deal? Okay? Maybe get a little better price and add more people to the list, just like for our counties trying to get you to go into the incinerator business. But the only thing about that is everybody's going to suffer medically. There's no safe way to do the incineration and we already have enough pollution going on with other events that occur in the world. So you, you did make the right decision. I, I can't say enough, you're, you're geniuses.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Graham?
Marion Allen? Marion Allen, please, go forward.
Hey, I need your name and address, please.
My name?
I need your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Marianne Allen, 12701 Mustang Trail, and I'm here with Broward Clean Air. And boy, do I have a lot of stuff to tell you guys tonight. You think that just because you're going to go zero waste, Broward County isn't going to put that incinerator there? That's their land. Whether you like it or not, they are determined to build that incinerator, 1.5 billion. But guess what else you aren't seeing? We have another one to fight. We were at the Doral meeting the other night, and they plan on building a billion-dollar facility five miles from US 27, which is still in your area, still next to the Everglades. And we listened to what the council there in Miami was saying, and it's all greenwashing terms. Oh, we want to get to zero waste. Yes, yes, but first we have to build that incinerator while we implement zero waste. The two terms are incompatible because you cannot reduce your garbage once you go into an agreement with an incinerator. You will be there 40 years with the incinerator while they slowly go towards zero waste. And the other problem is Broward County has been working on a plan for incineration, even though the other night I was here, and I'm back, I have a memorandum from Bean Furr to Mary Teague, president of the city, the League of Cities. And here's just an excerpt, okay? And this was March 13th, okay? He wants to take steps to potentially procure a new waste-to-energy facility that I and others expect will be needed to efficiently and safely dispose of waste within Broward County. Just remember, they don't need your permission, they own that land on your doorstep. So we're going to have to collaborate and figure out how we're going to fight two threats, Miami and Broward. And Southwest Ranches, within a week of signing the ILA, we put out a resolution, we will not tolerate any incinerator near our borders. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Graham?
Mayor, I have a question.
Hold on, Ms. Graham, is there any...
There were no other requests.
A quick question, then we're going to take a vote.
The email that was just referenced by the last speaker, is it possible for us to get a copy of that to make it a part of tonight's official minutes, please?
Can we get a copy of that, Rose?
The, the email that you just read, can we, the memorandum, can, can we have a copy so we can make it a part of the official record?
Great, all right.
Thank you.
No further speakers. City clerk, color roll, please.
And Mayor and Commission, for the record, you're voting on option B, and let me reread that just to make the record absolutely unequivocally clear. Under the item of the agenda, special emergency meeting, under the rules and regulations governing special emergency meetings, option B is a motion, which is, which has been made on the floor, to approve entering into an agreement with Waste Connections of Florida for solid waste disposal services in the best interest of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida pursuant to section 35.18, subsection C8 of the city's code of ordinances. And that's the motion on the floor, Mayor and Commission, thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney, City Clerk, color roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, feeling. We're now about to go to a shade session, so I got to have to ask you to leave, and we have a private...
Mayor and Commission, as the, the public is leaving, you get the court reporters...
Mayor, can you explain to them what a shade session is, so that they understand?
We have a meeting coming up, members of the public, that's a closed-door session as provided for by state law regarding litigation, having nothing to do with the item before the commission just now.
Call a shade session. Call a shade session.
Mr. Mayor?
Hey. Vice Mayor, just give us a second, it's really loud in the chambers.
If you can hear me, I'm going to, I'm going to hang up because I have to call in on a different number.
Vice Mayor, hold on, hold on, Vice Mayor, we're clearing the room.